Good evening.
Good evening. All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the Ordinance Committee of the Brockton City Council. I am Councillor-at-Large, Win Farwell. We do have a quorum. To my immediate right is Ward Five Councillor Jeff Thompson. To my immediate left, I have Councillor-at-Large David Texera, and to his left, I have Councillor Jack Lowly from Ward Six. Councillor Susan Nacastro is minutes away and will be here. We have one agenda item, and I would ask the Clerk to call the agenda.
An ordinance amending Chapter 23, Section 61-23-69 to increase the rate block quarterly usage fee for water. Invited to attend: Moises Rodriguez, Councillor-at-Large; Troy Clarkson, Chief Financial Officer; Patrick Hill, DPW Commissioner; Megan Bridges, City Solicitor or her designee.
So, Councillors, this has been pending for a few weeks. This ordinance was introduced by Councillor Rodriguez, and it is because we are currently subsidizing the enterprise account for wastewater services by using funds from the General Fund, which erodes our ability to provide other services such as library, police, fire, DPW. So, we did receive a fairly comprehensive study dated May 28, 2024, from Commissioner Hill, who is here tonight. It was authored by two gentlemen from CDM Smith, and it was a study of the Brockton and Water Sewer Revenue Requirements and Rate Projections, excuse me. And with that, I would ask either Commissioner Hill or Mr. Clarkson to come up to the microphones and begin the meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councillor.
Why don't I just give a brief overview, and then Pat can provide additional information as well. In addition, Commissioner Hill and myself, we have Budget Director Alvira Lopes and the DPW Business Manager Ilya Sargevsky.
Sargevsky.
Sargevsky. Thank you. So, we appreciate your taking this up in a timely manner. As I mentioned during the budget hearings, the sewer budget that you passed of $23.3 million and the water budget that you passed, which was a net of $23.7 million with the reductions that were voted by the council. The sewer budget in particular was based on the increase in revenues that's before you. So, Councillor Farwell is correct. Without an adjustment in the rates, and that has not been voted for some time, then we will either be forced to reduce the budget, of course, or reduce services, or actually, frankly, both. So, the proposal that is before you will provide sufficient revenues for the upcoming year. And I know that, Mr. Chair, you have made some suggested changes to lessen the impact of those rate increases on some of the blocks, and we've done some calculations as to what those impacts would be. And I know there have been several iterations, so that's why I'll pass it to Pat, but I do believe there is room to make some adjustments in the proposals and still meet our revenue requirements for this year. I think this is both a public policy and a legal question. One of the issues, however, that I think we need to discuss tonight is because we're essentially through the first quarter, or close to being through the first quarter, I think we should also talk about what an effective date would be for these rates, because the rate increases that we're discussing assume that new rate for the entirety of the year. So, I believe that you can make the effective date back to July 1. That would mean additional payments that would be sent out. So, I mentioned that in the presence of the Corporation Council so that we can have those discussions. But, you know, my obligation is, and the Department of Revenue, awaits a conversation with them and will not set the tax rate unless we can either show that there's been rate adjustments to meet the projected revenues or that there have been budget reductions. And so, with that, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hill to talk about his reaction to the rate proposals that have been considered.
Good evening, Councillors. So, sometime in October, we started taking a look at the sewer enterprise budget due to the fact that we knew that our biosolids costs were going to be accelerating. I met with CDM Smith and had them start reviewing the budget in totality. They did a pretty extensive document that kind of ripped apart each portion of the budget, identifying all the revenues versus the expenses and projections for the future based off of necessary capital projects that are going to have to happen. In doing that, we discovered a few things. First, we discovered that in 2020, that the sewer rates were supposed to mimic the water rates. That never happened. So, I will tell you today that the sewer rates that are being billed currently are the sewer rates that were effective in July of 2020. So, this 18% increase may sound dramatic, but after we ran the numbers, after looking through all these documents, after looking at some of the proposals that have gone back and forth, we figured out that, yes, an 18% increase is necessary. However, that 18% increase, in most cases, is still less than the budget, the ordinance as it stands today. So, going back and forth with a few of you, Councillors, and the proposals, the effective block rates, there are seven block rates. The first block, which is 0 to 750 cubic feet, currently gets billed $2.93 per 100 cubic feet. If we leave that proposal alone, no change. The second block rate, which is 751 to 1250 cubic feet, currently pays $2.89 per 100 cubic feet with an 18% increase that would adjust to $4.61 per 100 cubic feet. And it goes right down the line. We don't actually see any increases until we hit block rate number four. So, block rate number four would be $8.15 per cubic feet. Block rate number five would be $11.06 per 100 cubic feet. Block rate six would be $14.80 per 100 cubic feet, and block rate seven would be $19.67 per 100 cubic feet. Those bottom six block rates, with the, you know, carving out block rate number one, which we will leave alone, the first three are at 18%, the last three are at 21%. That would generate 3.733527 into the revenue portion of the budget, which would bring us into balance.
Commissioner Hill, just before I turn it over to my colleagues, I don't have those figures in front of me. As a matter of fact, the ordinance that was introduced, it has, you said that block rate six, which would be consumption of 25,001 and up, would be 14 something?
So, block rate seven, which is 25,001?
Okay. The document we have only has six, what's been introduced only has six block rates on it, and the final block rate, which is for the highest consumption, at least here on this document, is 25,001 to infinity, $10.62. So, I think we need to, before we get into this heavily, I think we need to make sure we're looking at the same figures that you have. And we can share a copy of the ordinance that was filed by Councillor Rodriguez, if that will help you.
Councillor, if I may, just to be instructive with, for both the committee and Commissioner Hill, it appears that in the proposal submitted by Councillor Rodriguez, he combined the first two blocks into the first block. So, in the rates that Commissioner Hill was just describing, block one is from 0 to 750, block two is 751 to 1250, which in this proposal is, the entirety of block one is 0 to 1250.
All right. So, just so that we all up here know, and the public knows what we're reading, when I look at the proposed ordinance that's been submitted, and I'm going to go by block rates by their number, not necessarily consumption, 0 to 1250 has no cost whatsoever. So, if we literally had someone who used 1249 cubic feet, they would, they just pay a minimum charge?
No, they would pay a minimum charge per cubic, per 100 cubic feet.
But I don't have that in front of me. That's the problem. And then the next one is 1251 to 2500. It would go from the current 620 to 732.
Right.
And then the next one we have, block rate three, 2501 to 5,000. The proposal is eight, yeah, 897, 8.97. Number four is 1015. Number five is 991. Number six is 1062. So, if we need to call a brief recess and change some figures here so that we all know what we're talking about, I have no problem with that.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Councillor Thompson.
What I believe is in front of us are the changes that we made back in 2020. That's what this kind of looks like, where we increased the water block rates, and this looks like what we increased from two, from that 620 to the 732. So, I believe what we have in front of us as the ordinance is what we did in 2020, increasing the water block rates. And for some reason, the new sewer block rates didn't come before us.
Counselor Nacastro.
I just want to point out that this is dated May 13 of this year, and it was accepted by the Clerk on May 13 of this year. That's the date it was filed. So, I don't see how we can act on something else tonight, but we can certainly have a discussion.
Well, Councillor, I would say we could obviously offer amendments to correct. So, I'm going to call a brief recess so that we can collate the information, come up with a listing of exactly what is currently being proposed, and then we can discuss from there. So, the committee will be in a brief recess. Okay, the Ordinance Committee has come back from recess, and the correct information for the figures that are proposed for any sewer rate changes are now with us, and I would ask either Mr. Clarkson or Commissioner Hill to read off the new proposed rates so that we know exactly. Actually, why don't we read off the current rates and then the new proposed rates as currently pending, and then we'll need a motion to amend the filing to reflect those.
Councillor, just a quick question on that. Do you want the effective rates in the ordinance and the recommended change? Is that what you're looking for, or the?
I'd like the current rates that we're billing for now.
Okay.
And then the ones that are proposed, and then we'll have to have a motion to substitute that information into the filing by Councillor Rodriguez, if I'm correct.
This is what's in the ordinance right now.
Correct. Well, no, but, yes. Okay. So, the current billed rates today are from 0 to 1250 cubic feet, $2.93 per 100 cubic feet. All these figures are per 100 cubic feet. 1251 to 2500 cubic feet, $6.20. We're, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, $3.91. 2500 to 5,000, $5.20. 5,001 to 10,000, $6.91. 10,000 to 25,000, $9.22. 25,000 to 875,000, $12.23. And greater than 875,000, $6.26.
$6 or $16?
I'm sorry, $16.26.
Okay.
All right. So, that's, just for the sake of clarity, those are the current rates. So, now let's go to the proposed rates.
So, the proposed rate structure would change from six to seven tiers. The first tier would be from 0 to 750 cubic feet, the current rate being $2.93. The adjusted proposal, zero.
Nothing.
Nothing.
All right. Is there a minimum fee charged, though, for an account just for that month?
Not in sewer.
Okay, not in sewer. Okay. So, nothing would be owed if the consumption is less than 750 cubic feet?
There would be billed per cubic feet. There is no minimum.
Got you.
Wait, just to clarify.
Block one would be from 0 to 750 cubic feet.
That's a change.
And the rate would not change? It would stay at $2.93?
Okay.
It said it was zero.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the clarification. It's a notch, no change, not a zero rate.
Correct.
Okay.
Block two would be 751 cubic feet to 1250 cubic feet. Current rate is $3.91. We're proposing an 18% increase, which would bring it to $4.61. Block three, 1251 cubic feet to 2500 cubic feet, is at $5.20 currently. That would be changed by 18% and would be $6.14.
All right, next.
I'm sorry. Block four, 2,501 cubic feet to 5,000 cubic feet, current rate $6.91. 18% increase to an adjusted rate of $8.15. Block number five, 5,001 to 10,000 cubic feet, current rate 922, adjusted rate 1106, 21% increase.
Mr. Commissioner.
Oh, 20%. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we're one block off.
Yeah.
So, the new blocks that we're proposing have an additional block.
Right.
No, meaning, so when you're saying, let's say, just for the one that you just mentioned, the 5,001 to 10,000?
Yep.
You're stating that the, that the original number is 922, but when I look at this, it says the current block rate is 691.
Yeah, and I think you said it's going from 691 to 815?
But you said that on the last block rate, so that's why I'm getting a little confused.
It's different amounts.
It's going from 691 to 815. Yep.
So, that's the proposal?
That's the proposal. Yep, and that's an 18% increase.
All right. And then the next one, 5,001 to 10,000?
5,001 to 10,000?
Going from 691?
It's going from 922?
922 to 1106.
To 1106.
All right.
That is a 20% increase.
All right. Number six, please.
Number six, 10,001 to 25,000. Current 1223, 21% increase, $14.80. Block number seven, 25,001.
Because then the blocks are completed.
Basically, to infinity. Current rate, $16.26. 21% increase, $19.67.
All right. So, let me stop for a minute, make sure all of our, all of my colleagues have that.
Mr. Chair, if I might, this is the spreadsheet.
You need a mic for the people at home.
I have the spreadsheet from which Commissioner Hill is quoting. I can make copies of this real quick, if you'd like, and then just, so we're all talking from the same page.
That would be good.
All right. While you're doing that, Commissioner Hill, I have a question for you.
Sure.
On the very last page of the report from CDM, because I want to make sure I'm reading this right, Table 20, I'll give you a minute to go to that. It's on the very last page of the, that CDM report that was authored, and it has sewer utility estimated household bill with energy credit. The annual sewer bill in 2024, and I assume that means fiscal year 2024, was 342. You're indicating that it would go up to 404 if the proposed rates that have been submitted were ordained? Is that, am I reading this right?
That was based off an 18% across-the-board increase for every block.
Okay.
So, the, we would have to adjust based on what gets approved, but we can certainly do that pretty quickly and send it out to you.
Okay. Well, yeah, because you have gone up in some blocks more than the 18%, but, but I would want you to adjust that. And then for fiscal year 2026, it would go to $427, which would be an $85, well, it would be a $23 increase over 2025, but an $85 a year, or approximately $8 a month difference for fiscal year 2026. So, if I'm reading that right?
That, again, that would be based off of the 18%, but yes. So, it's very difficult to formulate these numbers until we had the actual percentages. Once we have the actual percentages, I will tell you that, based on the seven-tier system, that the bottom two block rates make up 50% of the billing.
Okay. When you wish, when you say the bottom two, you mean?
Block one and block two.
Block one and two are the average homeowners?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councillors, questions? Anyone want recognition? Councillor Thompson?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Commissioner Hill and Mr. Clarkson. So, we're tonight just only looking at the sewer block rate increases, correct?
That's correct.
Looking at the CDM Smith memorandum, it did speak about water rate increases. Looks like the recommendation is not to make any adjustments this year, but potentially have to revisit this issue next year. Is that your understanding as well?
We have the benefit of retained earnings in water. We did not have that benefit going into the fiscal '25 budget this year with sewer. We were able to balance the budget with retained earnings from the prior fiscal year, fiscal '25. We don't expect that's going to be the case in fiscal '26, but rather than jump into another rate increase, we wanted to see what the impact was going to look like.
So, prior to the beginning of the discussion, in your opening statement, you said that there was some room, some wiggle room. Are the numbers before us that wiggle room, or are we able to work these numbers a little bit more during this meeting?
The wiggle room, Councillor, that I refer to is stuff that I have currently in my budget. We do monitor our budget very carefully, and there are expenditures in the budget that are necessary. However, I will not spend them unless absolutely necessary in order to maintain the budget this year. That would be capital improvements that are necessary at the sewer plant. That would be unexpected transportation costs. We have a, you know, Veolia has a line of projects that need to happen at some point in the very near future. We try to pick away at those capital projects with the regular budget every year. We get approximately $700,000 per year to do that. Last year, we did not spend, I think we spent $150,000 of that, knowing that the budget was an issue. I have positions in the department that I have not filled because I'm not comfortable filling positions in a budget that's very, very close. This year, it's probably the worst it's been in a long, long time. We're in the process of selling some solar credits that have been accrued to offset some of these costs. The rate increase were based off of the selling of those credits as well. So, we're trying to be as mindful to the constituents and the ratepayers in the city as possible. So, when I say that there's a little bit of flexibility, there is. Would I prefer to make those capital investments and improvements? Absolutely. But I don't think it's fiscally responsible to do so unless it's an emergency.
Councillor Thompson, can I, can I ask you to suspend for just one minute? I missed a step here. Would someone make a motion to substitute the information that's been provided by Commissioner Hill on the proposed rate structure for the original information that was offered in the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All right. So, there's a motion made and seconded to substitute the information we just received with that which was submitted in the original ordinance proposal. If there's no discussion, all in favor, all opposed, it is a vote. Thank you. Go ahead, Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the CDM Smith memorandum stated that, that we would have a projected deficit of 4.9 million for fiscal year '25 without this increase, that, as you stated, we are going to direct about $1 million in solar credits to address that deficit, and that today we're discussing the required, what they state as a 19.5 rate increase for fiscal year '25. If we went ahead with this, with the rates as you discussed, does that now put money in your budget to address these capital needs?
It will allow me to spend the capital money that I have currently in my budget. It will not allow me to do any large-scale capital improvements.
This memorandum also states that potentially the sewer utility will require an additional 5.7 rate increase in fiscal year '26. With this projected increase, will that additional rate increase next fiscal year also be required?
That is all presumptive, Councillor, on the debt and the current fiscal budget. I would be hesitant to say for sure that we'd be looking for another 5.7% increase until we were able to capture some of these revenues and see what kind of impact it had on the budget. We could also look through the budget and make necessary cuts where we can.
If I might answer that as well, Councillor, I think one of the things we've talked to you about over the last several years, and this is in both water and sewer, but we, we work hard to manage the debt, and we do, and I can provide this to you, have some retiring debt in both water and sewer that will allow us to authorize additional debt without increasing costs in the enterprise, and that will allow us to make some capital investments. And I think CDM spoke to that a little bit in their memo, but not in detail. And I think that's an important discussion for us to have because, again, we have the opportunity to make significant capital investments in those enterprises without increasing costs or rates by effectively managing the debt. And the other issue that we haven't discussed, but is very relevant to the rates and the financial viability of the enterprise, is our ongoing efforts to reduce our costs with sludge disposal. Right? So, we still have that federal earmark that we're working with to try to develop a long-term solution for that. And if we're successful in developing some sort of technology that reduces the cost to haul away that sludge, that opens up significant opportunity for either other budgetary costs or other capital investments in the enterprise. So, there's lots of those issues are linked together, and they all form that overall budget mosaic.
Okay. I appreciate that. So, that the 5.7 would basically be taken into account potential capital improvements and not necessarily, and not necessarily a requirement for operational and maintenance costs? Because if we're able to make additional borrowing and use some of that money for those capital costs, then whatever monies that are currently potentially directed for capital costs can then be used for operational costs? Is that?
That would be correct, yeah. I will say that there are, as Troy mentioned, through, through the I will say that there are, as Troy mentioned, through the rate study, there are mentions of significant amounts of money for capital investment projects. One of those investments was the BioSolids project, which we approximate to be between $30 and $35 million. So, that was all built into the revenue stream to make sure that we would be able to make that debt service when it came to fruition.
Okay, because I see your projections go out to about 2030. And so, these projected revenue increases will take into account both maintenance, operational personnel, and capital improvement costs out until 2030, essentially.
Based on the information that we provided them, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, so, secondly, which block rate would you say the average homeowner falls into? If there is an average?
Realistically, within the seven-tier block rate, block rate, or block one and block two, are approximately 50% of the consumers. So, that's the 50%, your average residence, what they would use.
50% of residents or 50% of consumers?
50% of the billing would be in those bottom two blocks, block one and block two.
Okay, and so, that includes businesses and all of that, so?
I mean, it could.
Right.
Any business certainly that uses a lot of water and generates a lot of wastewater would be in the higher tiers.
Okay, now, obviously, so the increase in the sewer rate, still with the increase itself, does not, except when you get into these much higher blocks, your, looks like, what, 10,000 cubic feet and over, they're all still lower than the current water block rates that residences are currently paying today?
Correct.
So, we're not, essentially, we're not raising the sewer rate, or the proposed raising of the sewer rates are still lower than the current water rates?
Correct.
Those are all I have right now. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor DeCastro?
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm interested to know how will these proposed increases impact the intermunicipal agreements that we have in Avon and with Whitman and along Route 18, and also Stonehill College?
So, those rates, I mean, you're talking about two different animals there. When you talk about Stonehill College and you talk about somebody like an Abington or Whitman, Abington and Whitman, they run on a percentage of flow. So, basically, they send, we'll just use Whitman as an example, a million gallons a day. We process approximately 17 million gallons per day. That goes on an annual percentage, so whatever percentage they send, they pay a portion of the Veolia fee, say, to run the facility. They pay a proportion of investments that have to happen into capitals. They do not pay, it's all carved out specifically in the IMAs. They do not pay certainly service fees, they do not pay other collection system issues or items that would fall in strictly Brockton, but anything related to the towns, they pay their proportional share based on the amount of flow that they send to the sewer plant.
So, these changes don't affect Abington, Whitman?
They do not. Every time the rates go up for us with the cost of running the two plants, or running the sewer plant in this case, anytime that expense goes up, their expense goes up.
Okay, because it's figured in?
I'm sorry?
It's figured in.
Correct, correct. People like Stonehill College, Abington, I believe it's Abington Grove, they have a separate, they pay at the top tiers, so they run a tier system anyway, so the block rates could have an effect on how they get built.
What's a tier versus a block?
It's the same thing, I'm sorry, I apologize, but the block, they're in a special block rate based on the amount of sewer that they send. Those block rates would obviously be adjusted, like everyone else's will be.
So, they're in a special block rate as set forth in their contracts?
That's what their IMA, their IMA is very specific in Stonehill, that they're billed per meter, I believe. In that block, whatever block rate that meter falls in is the block rate that we build on.
Okay, so potentially, it will increase?
It will increase for them.
With these increases?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else before I go back to Counselor Thompson? No? Counselor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, prior in your opening statement, you also said it'd be probably wise for us to discuss effective date. So, as of right now, this ordinance has an effective date of July 1st of 2024. How would this affect our numbers? Because, you know, we haven't really given, you know, we're going retroactive here, and we haven't given anybody notice that their water usage for this time period would be going up. I hate going retro, I would prefer going prospective. When is the next bill going out? October 1st? Is that when the next bill goes out?
The next bill will actually go out next week. It was supposed to go out this week. The woman that does the billing had a death in the family. Those bills would have gone out this week, but they'll be going out next week. My suggestion would only be that after we get through this billing, if we can go back and calculate what the percentage impact would be and have that as a specific adjustment on the third-quarter bill, that would probably be the most realistic approach. But, you know, I'm not a munis guy, I'm not, I know there's ways to do that. We may have to have munis come in and calculate all those things based on the rates, based on the changes. But I think the only way that we could do that would be to, one-time thing, doing in the third-quarter billing of FY '24, based on the back adjustment. If we do not do that, or if we don't make, we don't go back retroactively, there's a huge impact to the budget, and we'll be in trouble. That's $1.75 million in deficit based on the revenues that are in the budget today.
So, I think what Pat's suggesting, if I might, similar to your property tax bills, every year, right? Your first two quarters are always estimated.
That's right.
Because the tax rate isn't set until you have the tax classification hearing and we set the tax rate after that. So, your first two tax rate, tax, property tax bills are always estimates, and the second two are actuals. And there are always small adjustments based on that. What Pat's talking about is a similar process, but certainly an adjustment that's more than nominal. It would be significant because the sewer ratepayers would bear the years' increases in the last, in the final two-quarter bills. Right? Just making sure, I'm capturing what you're saying.
Okay, so, the first bill for first quarter fiscal year '24, fiscal year '25, oh, this is July 1st of '24?
Correct, but in FY '25. We're already into our second billing of FY '25.
And so, there'll be the two quarters of fiscal year '25 that they're catching up on, or, yeah?
Correct, correct.
That's correct, right?
And they'll be receiving that third quarter?
Correct, correct. And we could look, obviously, look into it and do it the way that Troy was just suggesting, whatever the impact would be on anyone to split that cost 50% and do 50% in the third quarter and 50% in the fourth quarter so there wouldn't be a huge expense coming at everybody.
And that would be preferable? Does that have to be part of this ordinance, or is that just policy?
I mean, I believe it would be a policy decision if you guys voted it in, you know, the rates as proposed. We certainly would do everything we could to make that happen.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor takes over.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, gentlemen. I got a question with the $15 quarterly fee. Is there still going to be?
The fees would not change.
The fee won't change?
No.
Okay, I want to piggyback what Counselor Thompson said about the react on the bill because we had a problem with the stormwater when we...
Right, and we want to get it right. So, that's why I would say to you that as soon as this next quarter of billing is complete and the bills get sent out, I would work with Ilya, my business manager, and that would be his sole project. And he would go in and try to calculate. He's built a pretty extensive spreadsheet that shows everybody's billing, every address, every bill, every account number. And he should be able to kind of formulate that and then figure out a way to get that 50% share of the first two quarters into one bill and the other 50% into the second.
If I might add to that, that one of the reasons why we proposed to you during the budget hearings that we create the position that Ilya holds is so that we were centralizing and having a single person within the Department of Public Works that was responsible for and accountable for the billing. One of the things that I've found is that, you know, we have had some issues over the years, and so what we're trying to do is centralize that process within this position so that we could be accountable to you and to the public. But Pat had a single point of contact and responsibility for the billing. And I think that Ilya's doing a fine job and is willing to be that responsible person.
So just, if this passes, I would think it'll be ideal if we can send a notice, you said next week?
As soon as this passes through final council, we can certainly, realistically, we could probably get something in the bills. I could see if we could get something printed. But the very least, we could get some kind of formal mailing done.
Just a notice, at least when they get their bill in.
Yep, absolutely.
Excellent point.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If there's no one else, I have a couple of things. I don't like retroactive collection of, pardon me, of fees. I think that's, there's a lot of people that do not have excess income in this city, and for them to even get a $25 or a $30 extra fee in a particular month means they're going to cut back on something else. Now, it doesn't affect me, I'm blessed, but there are other people that aren't. So, if we were going to do that, I'd want to put in, in this ordinance, not to exceed $12 or not to exceed $15. I mean, if you're talking about only going up $62 a year for fiscal year 2025, which is roughly $5 a month, and you thought we were losing money for the first quarter of billing, then we could certainly put in not to exceed a $15 charge, could we not?
Without having the numbers, Counselor, in front of me, I wouldn't say yea or nay. I will say that roughly 25% of those people in that lower bracket that you're probably speaking of, people that use 0 to 750 cubic feet, will see no increase anyway.
Okay, the other thing I wanted to mention to the committee, and I know we don't have much time left, but I sent some figures to, I sent some figures to Mr. Clarkson and to Commissioner Hill. And one of the things that I thought we should consider is increasing from $275 to $400 the sewer connection to brand-new houses. If someone builds a brand-new house, right now, we charge them $275 to hook into our system, which is a very, believe it or not, big benefit. If you live in a town where you've got to pump sewage once or twice a year, it's pretty expensive. I also suggested that on multiple housing units, we increase the fee from $550 to $725 per dwelling unit. That would mean that if you have a new development of 100 units, you'd bring in $75,000 because that's a massive infusion of inflow into the system. I mean, that's a costly burden for us to undertake, to handle that size development. And then I thought that industrial discharge permits, right now, we charge $260. That hasn't been adjusted. I thought that should go to 500. But I guess where I'm at tonight is, as we bear down on 7 o'clock, we do have to recommend something out. So, I can hold, if we handle what's on the table tonight, I can file a separate ordinance so that we can study and go through some numbers and figure out, is it beneficial, is it not beneficial, is it fair, is it unreasonable? And so that we don't jump ahead too much here, but...
We should know what our actual costs are.
Yeah, we should know what our actual costs are. That's a good point, Counselor Thompson. I'm just concerned we're going retroactive, and I'd like some type of a mechanism that if this is going to be, if this is going to be the new rate structure beginning in fiscal year 2025, if we send out retroactive bills, I really don't want them to be for more than $10 or $15 for the three months that we've lost. And I don't think that's, I don't think I'm shortchanging the city that much, and I hope I am helping the average homeowner. But you said without the figures, we can't do that, so... What does the committee think? Any amendments, any suggestions?
I mean, I think that's a policy issue. We can recommend that the, whatever excess, the retroactive payment be broken up into those two quarterly payments. I think that'll reduce the burden. I don't like going retroactive either, but if by not going retroactive, we don't accomplish what we're setting out to accomplish, and that's keeping our enterprise fund healthy, and, you know, without robbing the general fund, which there's no funds to rob, then at this point, making sure people understand in this next billing, the next bill that goes out, that these rates are going up, that we'll be able to divide any retroactive fee over next two billing cycles, maybe give them a few months to, you know, make some arrangements. And I haven't done the numbers, I really wouldn't know what an average amount would be. But given these numbers, I'm imagining we're looking at maybe a $20 increase, $25 increase. I wouldn't, I really have no understanding of really what the average person uses and what they would expect to see as an increase. So, do you have any insight to that, Commissioner?
So, what I have is general numbers, without getting into specifics per account. I can certainly get that number for you. I can also say that if it made the council more comfortable, we could send the bill out in the third quarter and allow people six months to pay the balance with no interest. So, we could carve that portion of the bill out. They would pay their normal bill, and would give them six months to prep for the total bill, and we wouldn't charge interest on that portion of the bill.
Since it's approaching 7 o'clock, is that a motion to have, to add into this ordinance that if retroactive payments are required, they'll be spread over the last two payments in fiscal year '25?
At no, with no interest?
With no interest.
Interest.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, all opposed? Question now comes on the ordinance as proposed and amended. If there's no further discussion, is there a motion to favorably recommend?
Motion to recommend favorably to the full city council.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to favorably recommend as amended this proposed ordinance to the full city council. All in favor? All opposed, unanimous vote? I think that's it, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
A motion to adjourn, please?
Motion adjourned.
All right, move seconded, all in favor, all opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.